Everybody hear me? Yep, okay. Um, so, Madam Secretary, can we get a roll call? All right, go ahead and bow our heads. Dear Lord, we're coming here tonight together, um, to, uh, to work on our, on our goals for the city. And we pray for wisdom and clarity for what are the best things to set up and prioritize for the city and for the, uh, for the citizens of the city. And we just, uh, we just pray for you to be here and just guide us, as Jesus says, amen. How to interrupt them for the place. Basically like, I'm on my knees. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, so this is like, it is a regular meeting, public meeting, so we're gonna go for public comments. The City Council welcomes citizens' participation and comments on all council meetings. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Out of respect for everyone's time, the council is not permitted to respond to your comments. The Texas Open Meeting Act requires the topics of discussion deliberation be posted on the agenda not less than seventy-two hours in advance of the council meeting. If your comment relates to the topic that is on the agenda, the council will discuss the topics on the agenda at that time that the topic is discussed and deliberated. So, this is our workshop agenda, and I am going to, I'll say with a great.
Good evening, council members, and, um, thank you again. I understand that you ended up, like, four hours last night. And, boy, talk about mean city managers back to back from you, two in a row. So, thank you for, for being here today. Thank you to the staff for being here and those in the audience, appreciate it. Richard, can you come up here? And do a quick introduction? Um, I don't know, you probably all know, most of you know Richard, Bonnie, from the Chamber of Commerce. Richard, this is your seat. I can't tell you what it means, but just have a seat there for a moment. Um, I would say tonight is a, is a, is a very informal time where, as electeds and certainly those in the audience, um, participate on brainstorming for the future of our community, for setting goals. And so, um, I wanna kinda give some introductory comments in regards to goal setting and what, what Richard and I are gonna do is we're gonna do some tag teaming. Uh, I will say, just to admit it right off the bat, I have attended a lot of, uh, goal setting, but there's always been another facilitator. So, I brought Richard along to help me, uh, be my bodyguard when it came to facilitating this particular event. So, it's all the positive of where we want our city to go. Um, a lot of positive things to say about our city. Certainly challenges that we have to continue, um, trying to look at how are we going to, uh, work through those and where they all lie in the priority list. So, with that, I am gonna get going on the slides. I think. So, go ahead, next slide out. I don't have the clicker, so you have to help me out. Oh, where is it? Can you be my clicker? I've got hard-boiled, click. I have two hands no more. Good to see all U E D C folks here. Thank you for, for being here. You're awesome. Yeah, about time we feed you guys. Seems like, uh, you're always feeding us. So, I wanna, um, go through the outline first of what, again, we're gonna talk about, how we're gonna go through tonight. So, what is goal setting? We'll talk about that, roles of city council and staff, 'cause there's some important understandings on how this whole process works and your roles and our roles. Uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the spouse of the city finances. I'll talk about the projects that are in progress. So, again, as you think of goals looking forward, some of those certainly are to finish a number of projects that we see there, but I think it's, uh, I went through the list and you'll see the list today, and you're doing a lot. There's a lot going on out in our community that the city is currently working on. And then, um, there'll be some, uh, public discussions, so that's when you're gonna start really opening up, talking about goals. We have, uh, we have, um, some scribes that are selected from the staff, and then we'll just open it up, and Richard's gonna help me with this part, to just really go forward and talk about what we want our city to be in the future, and what we want it to look like and what we wanna focus on. Uh, then we'll take, we'll talk about, uh, ranking our community goals, uh, focusing on the dollars and the efforts. Um, there'll be some, there'll be some conversation, and you'll understand a little bit when I kinda go through goal setting, that there will be goals, there will be strategies, there'll be action items, there'll be a lot of things talked about. Um, and we'll have to try to separate those out so that, um, you'll see in the end, when we all finish it, there's a nice flow from the goals all the way down to action items and accountability for getting them done. Uh, and then, um, we, we put on your pro, uh, budget priorities. That's an addition to what I had done. I talked to Richard, um, he wisely called me and said, um, you know, what are, what are we gonna focus on? And I wanna make sure, because there's really two big things here. You've got your overall goal, which are, we'll, we'll talk about in a minute, but really, we are in budget season right now, and so we do want to be able to think, take an opportunity to talk about goals in the sen, or, or priorities in the, in the budgetary sense as well. And so, uh, we're gonna try to have you work on that so that as we present that budget here in the very near future, it has some input from you from the beginning versus I present it and then you get to tell me the priorities that you thought, or I can, I can't, I need to guess all the time what your priorities are. So, that's a little bit different, so we may, uh, move quicker through the goals to get the budget priorities, unless City Council wants to do that differently. But we talked today and thought, you know, budget is here, budget priorities are very important. We do wanna get there today. Um, can think too that this process is probably, will be multi-meeting over time. Um, and I'll, I'll go through that real quickly. Could you, next slide? So, let me just say on goal setting, and they're also called strategic plans, they're kinda interchangeable. So, from the city council's perspective, it boosts our focus, persistence, motivation, uh, gives clear goals, enhances performance, satisfaction, well-being, and there's measurable goals that be enabled to prog, to, uh, to track progress and accountability. Next slide. So, I think this is something I just wanted to talk to you about, the goals. And again, think of goals as the higher level, what you want for the city when you talk about the, the big up in the cloud, overarching goals for the city. And these are just some that I wanted to put that other cities have had. Economy, economic development, health and safety, transportation, neighborhood livability, culture, entertainment, efficient, high-performance government. Again, those aren't ours necessarily, but they could be. Those are decisions that you'll kinda throw around when you talk about that. And what we wanna do is, Richard's gonna work through this side with me, and I'll be with him. But we wanna, you'll see in a minute here, we wanna go at the goals first and see if we can't take thirty, forty-five minutes on that and then move to the budget priorities, because that's kinda, kinda get down more in the weeds of where we spend our limited time. Next slide. So, I, I wanted to just kinda go through his, talking about how this all works. So, work plans, strategic plans should inform one another, but do not have to be the same. So, um, I'll just, I'll take it all great. In other words, don't fall in the trap of focusing on operational tactical items during this government goal setting. Um, your goals should include items that are top-level or were taken priorly, and why is that? Well, operational initiatives and action team items should be reserved for the department heads behind you. In other words, you're gonna talk about the big things, then they'll put the work plan together, and that'll all come back to you hopefully in September, when you'll see your goals and how the work plan underneath it says, this is how we are supporting your goals as a council. So, we don't wanna get lost in the, the small things, um, certainly during the process tonight. Then when you have the strategic plan goals and work plans, it helps create alignment. So, I think one thing that's really clear is that back in two thousand two, there was some work done on this. But you're all new. Um, you're all brand-new as of May, basically a little over a year ago, and so we've never done this together as a group. But this is very important, I'll say, for the staff to hear where you want to go, and then you know what they're gonna do, and then it's, we keep reporting back to, to let you know how are we progressing on that. And, you know, these are always gonna be changed as you go through the year. They're never set in stone. Goals change, uh, strategic priorities change, action items change, other priorities come up. And so, uh, we'll, again, that's something that we, with the ongoing process, to keep everybody on the same page. Now, I put a quote up there, "Last word of advice to be methodical with the goal-setting strategic planning process, don't try to create work plans and goal-setting at the same time, uh, as it will cause an overload of change management issues." Most organizations build goals, strategic plan, and then ask departments to align their key activities for the plan. So, that's what we wanna accomplish tonight with you as a city councilor. Let's work on the goals, you're the policymakers. Uh, again, this comes back multiple times, believe you me, before we say, this is the stamp of approval that the council has on where we're going. Next slide. So, with that, sir, will you take the goal-setting side of this?
Appreciate everyone being here. I know, put in a long night last night, those type of things. And Greg, Candace asked me to help tonight. I said, sure. Um, definitely not an expert on this or anything, but our goal tonight is just have a conversation. So, leadership of the city, city council, mayor, you know, department heads, we can all be on the same page. We hear from each other, just make sure our goals are aligned so we can be efficient with time and resources, and we can move ahead at a, a nice, fast, efficient pace as a community, uh, so we can provide the best services for our residents. I have no perceived outcomes for tonight from my end. I think it's why Greg asked me to come here. I just wanna have a dialogue tonight and conversation. We put a lot of ideas up here, and like Greg said, we're not gonna get down into the nuts and bolts of how we're gonna accomplish everything, but we just wanna kinda hear from everyone, especially from our, our council mayor. What are your vision? What are your goals? Why are you serving in your position? What is your vision for Mount Pleasant? Um, I think we're gonna have a few scribes up here that are gonna help me, 'cause I have terrible handwriting. Is that, is that okay? Raise your hand, speaking. Department heads can jump in too, if we need things. I can't write anything, so I just, I'm gonna have some questions. Please break for you. We need this, just dialogue discussion. We're just gonna put as much information up here, and then later on, we're gonna create a strategic plan vision and those type of things that's gonna lead to our budgeting process, those type of things, okay? So, we'll just kinda, we need our city council mayor kinda lead this discussion, obviously. Um, okay.
Hammer fist program?
Yep.
I meant to start this thing on a, on a lighter note, and I forgot. What happens when I don't put it on my own agenda? Jessica, you come up here a minute? So, we wanted to, Jessica is, uh, recently been hired to help with downtown group, and certainly she's been helping do some, um, we'll call it, public communications for us. She has another, uh, appointment to get to tonight, so I decided let's pull her in here. And I think she has a little video to show you on our, uh-oh, our, our, our future Hollywood movie star.
Hi, everyone, I'm Jessica Boucher, the Ministry of Events Coordinator for the City of Mount Pleasant. Um, I joined the team on, uh, June twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Um, over the past five years, I've been working with marketing and events. So, and I'm so happy to be here and to serve the community. So, thank you, everybody, uh, for the opportunity.
Can we roll it?
Hi, City of Mount Pleasant, this is Garrett Houston. I'm your Public Works Director. I'm here to announce some exciting street improvements coming to a street near you. Here's a roll of some of the streets we're working on.
Stay tuned for future updates, road closures, and please pardon our progress.
I know some of you in the city council have been very, uh, interested in us trying to do a little more than hold a council meeting or send out a press release on occasion. So, certainly Jessica's here to help us with that, and these are the kind of things that they just started kicking off. And if you saw one last night, when it came to the downtown, just quick little blurbs of, of good things that are going on in our community. So, thank you, Jessica, and I know you got someplace else to go, so. Sorry, Richard.
You're good. Okay, we're gonna start big vision stuff first. We're gonna try and narrow it down, those type of things. There's no wrong answers, it's a safe place. So, first thing I wanna start with, when you think about Mount Pleasant, three, from, when you think about Mount Pleasant, three to five years from now, what do you see? We have a microphone here, if you wanna speak in that and those type of things, it'll take a minute. Okay, so I wanna kinda, what kinda, they can speak too. You wanna hear from city council, mayor? Well, right, we'll write all these things on, on vision on one of these things, kinda just, big picture, three to five years. How do you see Mount Pleasant, or when you see Mount Pleasant in three to five years, what are you thinking about?
Uh, I would like to see it completely transparent.
Okay.
Where there, you really won't have to worry about FOIAs, because any information that somebody's gonna want is gonna be out there, like finances and stuff like that. Uh, build communication, which we've been doing, and it's gonna get better and better. Uh, that it's, there's just bridges, right? It's, it's gonna be more productive, definitely friendlier, and, uh, basically just get that trust back to our employees and to our residents of the city.
Okay, I like that, so we got transparency, access to information, trust, communication, okay? Other thoughts, three to five years? When we think of Mount Pleasant, what are we thinking about?
So, mine might be a little large. Is that okay?
There's no wrong answers here.
So, um, I was telling Paul last night, I was thinking, well, okay, the airport makes money, so I would love to see that continue to grow. Uh, those of us that live in Mount Pleasant get so sick and tired of driving to the airports. And so I thought, wouldn't that be fun? It's just fun, it's a dream.
Okay, growth at the airport?
Growth at the airport, that we can get on like a little jumper and go to DFW or Love Field, would that not be fun?
That would be nice.
And affordable. Um, I would love to see transportation. Uh, I do have two handicapped children, and so tracks is not, uh, a good mix with people who need, you know, transportation, get on a bus, be able to go to Walmart, go to the hospital, go to the bank, go places like that. So, yes, I'm on ad calls, but, um, I hadn't had the chance to really look at transportation. I also would like to see a huge tourism area, um, not just to fall under another subcategory where it is its own, because I've seen in other cities, tourism's, tourism promotes money. It brings people in where they are, um, spending money here. Unfortunately, our precious little town loves to tear down our older things. But I think that if we were creative in building something that people would come, spend the weekend, shop, spend money, um, that would then possibly help us to afford the transportation, um, build things. And so, um, and then the last thing which I goes with that little clip, that I, I just think we need a, a PR group, which hopefully Jessica can do it, 'cause we've had enough bad breath. I would love to see in five years, nothing but positive things about our community. Um, and that we are doing nothing but highlighting all of our wonderful assets, and, um, that other towns around us would be jealous of us, instead of us being jealous of them.
Good, perfect.
I have a long list, too. The first thing I would like to see in the next three to five years is that our city become solid enough that our financial issues are not a burden on us every year, that we reach some kind of... That we reach some kind of, uh, plateau where we know we're okay, but we know we're not now. We need that stability, not only for our citizens, our community, our staff, we need that for security. Also, I guess my second one would be the relationships between our TRICUD and the county and EDC. In the last few months, our relationships have actually transformed. Our EDC and the city are on the same page. We are dedicated to helping each other. I would like to see us focus more on our county and TRICUD relationship, uh, and that we take every step possible to repair that relationship. Uh, the other one I would be, I'm really focused on because of where I come from, is the livability of our community. We have to have the best looking communities, neighborhoods, the safest environment. Because I don't care how profitable you are, if you don't have a place where people want to live. We have great parks, we have so much to offer, but we have to make sure our residential areas and even our business areas are clean, livable, safe, and that everybody wants to come here. And, uh, efficiency, transportation, I guess, would be the next ones, um, or transparency. We still have to make sure that everybody feels like they have access to the city, that they can get the answers they want, that they can ask the questions they feel like they need to ask, and that someone is going to respond to them.
Love that, thank you.
And I, and I give kudos to Garrett. He has really been helpful in a lot of things that I've come up and had conversations about from other people.
I would love to see, like Debbie said, our relationships rebuilt, um, and, and unity there, here in the community. Um, also, growth in manufacturing through the economic development in EDC. Also, to have fully staffed, um, police and, and medical staffing that we need in that thing. So, priority there. Livable environment, very much important as well.
Okay, anything else? Just word thoughts, what others were talking? Okay, kind of on the same lines, okay? If there's one trait you wanted Mount Pleasant to keep, and is the same in five years that we have right now, what would that be? What's something that you love about Mount Pleasant right now that you hope's the same in five years? Small town, love of the city? Anyone can jump in too. I know we're kind of focusing up here at the front, but.
I had one on, uh, the last category.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is, uh, support local business. Uh, maybe start like an initiative like buy here, stay here, play here, something like that. Maybe start advertising that. Could be an asset for you to, for local.
Your thoughts?
So, along with Garrett's local growth, as we support the industry and economic development, I'd like to see a, a much more wide variety of local retail opportunities for people so they stay here rather than each weekend go spend their money an hour away.
For sure.
Same, um, entertainment and fully developed, development, possibly, interesting, crossing something for entertainment value, the retail stuff here.
Love that.
And noticed, and I'm not a hundred percent sure because you don't really know if you read it on the internet, if it's true or not. But, um, I've heard, like, Paris is getting an Amazon, is that right? EDC? And you see Sulfur Springs that is getting a Buc-Ee's. So, I agree with Mark that we need these different kind of businesses that will get sales tax. And Walmart might be one of our largest sales tax, you know, producers in Mount Pleasant. But Amazon's getting the majority of it. And so, just me the other day, I needed ink toner for my printer. I had, I did not want to go to Walmart, so I ordered it from Amazon. And you think about that, that's going somewhere else, that sales tax is going to.
So, increase our local tax base, would that be fair to say?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we put that, increase local tax base. The first by businesses, mayor?
So, to latch on to that, I want us to be, Greg, let me know that most cities are known as the city of, cities of no, right? And that's kind of where I feel part of what our citizens think we are. So, I want us to be the city of yes. I want us to be solutions based. When we get a call from a customer, well, when we get a call from a customer, right? They are our customers, yep. I want a solutions based approach to that. And if there is a no, then there is a good reason for that no, and that no is a claim. But I think that's good for our businesses. I think we, you know, we may have lost some businesses and, and probably lost some citizens too. Just, we want to, I'm, I want us to be approachable as a city. You know, when they're actually happy to call city and code enforcement and us, and to have a positive experience.
Love that, perfect. Anything else on the next three to five years you hope to see in Mount Pleasant that we're known for? Just thought.
So, um, just having vibrancy in our community with an, an identity, a self-identity that is clear and that gives the people who live in our community pride in who we are and a, a common direction so that everybody, uh, feels like they're part of something good, positive, and moving in the right direction.
Hey, love that. Other thoughts, three to five years?
So, related to the economic development, we are a heavy, uh, manufacturing, which is awesome. I love the businesses that started here and are still here. But we could definitely diversify into some, uh, there's a large tech, anyways, a lot of the, a lot of the, our children will leave and not necessarily come back because of the lack of diversification of jobs. And so, if they want to, um, you know, if they want to be a computer programmer, right? They're probably not going to come back. So, some diversification there in, within our, uh, economic opportunities for jobs.
Versification of industries, I like that, thank you. Other thoughts? We have a lot of overlap with all these things, so just, just jump in anytime, those type of things. Garrett?
I guess I'm the one to talk about beautification. Uh, Debbie, she hit it on the head. I think that's one of the things that a lot of people love about Mount Pleasant, is it's a beautiful area here in, uh, northeast Texas. And we continue to strive for a beautification initiative that would be great for the whole community.
Okay, we're going back to that question we were talking about. What do you hope is still true in Mount Pleasant in three to five years? What do you hope is still true about Mount Pleasant that's true today in three to five years? What do you hope doesn't change in three to five years?
I would say, based on what I've seen in the last, since November's, in the last six months, the last year that the council came out, I will say that I've seen a whole new attitude towards the transparency, towards trying to repair everything that needs to be repaired and, uh, committing ourselves to the citizens. And I hope in three to five, seven years, that we still have the same reputation, that we're all on the same page, trying to do our best for our city.
Okay, commitment to the residents, the citizens, like that?
The culture. So, when I say the culture, um, Mount Pleasant has always been a place where the residents have a sense of pride. We, um, whether it's in your schools, whether it's in your, your workforce, um, we don't get down long. We fight to come back. And I think that where we have been, um, we are in the process of, um, fighting to get back what we had, which I think we're close. And so, in three to five years, I'm hoping that we will, um, be at the top, that we will all know that we have to work together and that there's different people in our community that have different answers, and we need to listen to those answers, uh, those questions and answers. Um, but it is, it's a sense of pride that our community has, and, and I never stop.
Like that? Anything else, thoughts? We have some city employees that have been here a while? Anything you want to keep go, keep going?
Yeah, I, I'll just chime in on that too. It's continuing to move forward. I think that, uh, some of that stuff gets behind us. It's, it's exciting to see people start moving forward, kind of, okay? Things happen, but the future's bright.
Looking ahead?
Yeah.
I like that.
Go ahead.
Being proactive versus reactive, like that, Garrett? Other thoughts? Okay, I like that. If you could say one word you want Mount Pleasant to be known for, what would you say? When people think of Mount Pleasant, what would you want them to be the first thing they think of? Take a minute. I know it's on the spot, there's no wrong answers, there's just some tough questions. It's just going to help us funnel things down, kind of make sure we're all united in our vision, help us create our budgeting process. Home?
I would say home because that's what everybody really looks for in life, is when they can go home and it's peaceful, it's restful, it's comfortable. It's where you want to be, it's where you, when you retire, you want to be here. I would, I would say that they think of us as a place to be home, that you're safe here and that everybody's welcome and that it's a great place to be.
Love that, thank you for sharing that.
Hallmark, the basic Hallmark, downtown.
Okay.
Everybody knows everybody, sweet.
Love that. Hallmark, community feel, love that. Know their neighbors, support each other, love that. Other thoughts? Okay? Garrett?
Maybe pride. I think, uh, that a lot of people that serve in council, all the workers, everyone takes pride in what we do. And, uh, it's a good thing to just have pride in your community, city, and everything, everything that we do.
Like that, perfect.
I'll just, I'll just chime in as a newcomer. My wife and I moved here because of the unbelievable beauty here, the pointiness of the city, and being able to go to lakes, trees, and, uh, woods, and, uh, and the people were, have been so polite. So, the whole issue of quality of life, I think there's such a beautiful environment here too that needs to be protected, protected. But also, I think we don't brand ourselves enough. I think we talked about tourism and things like that, that, man, it is beautiful. I think people who come here say, wow, I never knew. I would be one of them. I, I didn't know anybody in Texas when I moved here. This is where my wife and I said, this is where we want to live. But I think that's kind of one of those overall goals, we want everybody to feel that. We want them to get a job, we want them to come here and be welcomed. And I, I would say, I think we just have to overcome some of the negative challenges that have been here, some of the past that's got to be dropped. And we just look at what we have, but this is amazing.
And to go back to the, something to see in three to five years would be something that, uh, Robert touched on in our meeting last night. I would love to see a developed I thirty.
Developed I thirty, okay, let's put that on there. Thank you, mayor, perfect. Councilman?
Seeing the I thirty, we need to get, whether it's transportation, I'm not sure, um, but we need to get, whether it's EDC, whoever, to work on the access roads, which means a group to, I don't know if the term is lobby, going to Austin.
Yeah.
So, that those access roads are good for development up and down those roads.
More efficient infrastructure, for sure.
Pull on, pull on.
Infrastructure investment, love that.
So, they cheated and they didn't get one word. Just kidding. Anyways, I'm going to go back to the one word, and I'm going to say, it's kind of related to what Greg said, which is the beauty of the area, but to me, it's hospitality.
Hospitality, I love that.
As, as we have people come to live or to play, we want them to go away thinking, man, what an awesome place. I want to be there. And so, that hospitality.
Okay, any other thoughts? Ms. Clarabelle?
I would say that Mount Pleasant is very supportive. You have a lot of different individuals or groups or companies that are just so willing to help. And I think that that's something unique about Mount Pleasant. Uh, before I worked with the city and the EDC, I worked with, uh, the school system. And you would be surprised how many people just give of their time, their efforts, their money, give to people who are in need just to help support somebody who just needs a hug or whatever. But I would say that Mount Pleasant is very supportive.
Supportive, I love that. Okay, any other thoughts? Okay, we kind of talked about this a little bit, but I want to kind of focus more inward at the moment, along the same lines. What kind of values do we want our city leadership, which is you in this room, to embody?
Integrity, integrity, and, and, uh, transparency and trust and communication.
What, what values do you want to embody representing the City of Mount Pleasant?
Unity.
Unity?
Yeah.
I love that, perfect.
Caring and cooperative.
Caring and cooperative, perfect.
Approachable.
Approachable. Love that. Any other city leaders? Garrett, what I could see?
Honor and honesty.
Honor and honesty, love that. Councilman said?
Loyalty.
Loyalty, love that, thank you.
So, I think we've seen the last, uh, year and a half, we need to return to, uh, I don't like this term, because I don't have a better word, uh, being positive. The positivity, I guess, I don't, I don't know how to, we've seen a lot of, um, uh, I'll just say unkindness, focus on individuals or elements of our community, and I'd like to see that be raised.
Love that. Other thoughts on that question, okay? What's one thing, we have all these things up here, thoughts, values, ideas, goals, those type of things. What's one thing amongst all these things, you say a couple of things, what's one thing we should preserve no matter how much we grow or change? What do we need to cling on to as a community in Mount Pleasant?
Our history.
History.
And our town. Uh, we need to preserve our history, our town, um, and, and you just have to have your small town. You just have to, and grow out from that. I would say the small town values, because I don't care how much you grow, you can still have that small hometown, uh, open welcome door attitude.
Okay, love that. Other things, what should we cling on to as we're going through this process of strategic planning? That were reflected in our budgets down the line, in our action plans, our strategic plans? Is there anything that we need to cling on to make sure we don't overlook? Togetherness, unity, we talked about that?
Our people.
Our people, don't forget about the people.
Our people, um, you know, speaking from me, I get in a habit of just getting in my car, going to work. And I really don't, um, drive around and look at the, the neighborhoods and just see, um, who might need some help and who doesn't. And I think we as a city might not be able to help everybody monetarily, but we might be able to direct them to where they can get help.
Yeah, I like that. Garrett?
Quality of life and preserving, uh, even if we grow, we continue to, to support like the safe parts, for one thing. You continue to grow those parts, you don't forget, as we move on, build new. We don't forget, uh, the quality of life for the citizens.
Like that. Like that.
And I think something important is our motive, why we do what we do, we serve our community.
The why behind we do everything, right? And that's what this whole, that's a big thing what we're doing tonight, right? Where we're gonna start getting into more detail than budgets and specifics and those type of things. What's the why we're doing things? That's why we're throwing all these things up, to understand what the why is, and so every decision we make hopefully funnels to that why. So we're unified as a city council, as a staff, as a community, we understand why we're doing things, why we're making decisions, we are. We understand our why behind everything, so I like that. Thank you.
Service over self.
Service over self. Love that. We are a very selfless community.
I will just say for, again, being a foreigner, I came from a foreign country some years ago, like California. And I'll just call it your values here. As people, you do not want those to get away from you, because it's tragic. And you are very wonderful people with great values. So you do not want to lose that.
Do not lose our core values, our history of our town, what's made Mount Pleasant the place that we all wanna live, work and play, right? Councilman talked about that earlier, love that. Any other thoughts? Okay, let's, how many pages we got? We got a few pages here. Can we rip off, are they sticky? Maybe stick them on the wall over here?
Yep.
Look at that.
We need to get them all up. Get them all.
Okay.
Are you wrapping this up, partner?
Not at all, we're just getting started.
Well, wait a minute now. They're tired.
I know, we're good.
They were here, but they're looking good so far. Good energy.
Okay, we're gonna get into the budget stuff in a second, I got one more.
So I would, so my thought was that we would try to come down with five or five to seven. Of all of those things you said, can we roll those into five or seven goals that we hit on really hard and maybe? You wanna go and try to look at them, but you're gonna have to move the board so everybody can see what we got.
Okay, I'll read them, you have paper in front of you, maybe start with the list of top ten, okay? That if we had to focus as a city, the city leadership, city staff, as residents, ten things that we really wanna focus on in the next twelve months, that's gonna project us to those things we talked about in three to five years. What are those things? I'll just read them, there's no wrong answers, we got the one word, we talked about, home, hallmark, pride, beauty, hospitality, being supportive, being completely transparent, open communication, trust, growth at the airport, transportation efficiencies, tourism, PR group, financial stability, relationships with key stakeholders of the community, including EDC, TRISUD, county, et cetera. Livability, developed I thirty access roads, growth in manufacturing, increased police staffing, public safety support, support local businesses, local growth, retail, entertainment options, increase in entertainment options, increase our local tax base, solutions based city, creating a stronger self-identity as a community, diversity in jobs and industries that we have in Mount Pleasant, preserving beautification in Mount Pleasant. Values we talked about, integrity, trust, unity, caring, cooperative, approachable, honor, honesty. We talked about preserving our history, our town values, unity, serving our people, honoring our people, making sure we have a good quality of life, understanding the why behind we're doing everything, service over self, small town, love the city, commitment to citizens, culture, looking ahead. Okay, so think of seven to ten top priorities, they're all gonna be a little bit different, that's okay. It's okay that we have different passions or interests. We talked about what we want Mount Pleasant to look like three to five years, but we gotta figure out what things we need to focus on this year that's gonna push us towards that three, five years, and then our comp plan that's in twenty fifty, preserve these things down the road, right? Okay, everyone got their list? Mayor, you got a list? Okay, we'll start writing some of these top ones, okay, we're gonna whittle down, so what did we say? We got, Mayor said, I guess pass the mic.
Just the one that, I mean, I think they're all together, transparency, communication and trust.
I'm just talking off my head, but when I look at all of these descriptions, they all kind of fall under various similar categories. And so instead of just taking trust or, you know, transparency, you could have trust, transparency with so many of the other things, I think that's the culture of who we are as far as our spirit and our soul. Then when you look at economic growth, whether it's retail, transportation, look at that back wall back there with the EDC. And that's where I think we need to look at some of these things. Now, they're type A, they can't really do small town, but they might have some resources or some things to help us. I look at the fact that the city of Mount Pleasant needs to make money. We need to quit thinking that we're gonna keep giving, 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 but we need to find some of these things that we can make money with in addition to water, in addition to sales. So anyway, that's, I just think that if you look at these, you could lump them up into five categories.
Can I try seeing, it's a good thing you give up your microphone, then I can interrupt you. So I do think that what you're gonna find is, what Richard says, and what you just said, is you're gonna find things in there. So I'll just use, for example, trust, transparency, integrity, fiscal responsibility. Those are actually cultures within the organization. That's us. All of those are us. And so I think there's, I think that is one that can grab a number of them. So what we would look at, what Richard's sitting after here is, there's one overarching culture of the organization. And then what all falls under that is the responsibility, trust, integrity, open transparency, communication, all of those things fall under there. To me, two of them stood up, that one and then economic development, obviously, very, very big, very big. If you don't mind, I'm gonna keep going for a second. I think something that I felt there from the very beginning, that we've done so much better, but can go leaps and bounds farther to be really good is the whole issue of relationship building and partnership with not just EDC, Chamber of Commerce, School District, just a number of things that it's, I just, you know, you talk about the county, you have the fire agreement, well, that's a good, big part, that's the relationship with TRISUD and water. Those are interconnected, but if you don't have that relationship, you probably aren't gonna get it. So I do think those are two, economic development, the whole thing of relationships, and certainly the internal culture of the organization. And of you, you're all, you're at the top, you're the highest accountability, me and then staff, I need that. So I just think those are three that jump out at me right away would be. I would see us listing under those everything.
Chief? I think Garrett has one too.
Let me ask for some clarification then, since we're kinda broadening our scope, right? So a lot of these things are related to economic development. But under economic development, there are different priorities based on city versus EDC versus our own citizens who are opening businesses and stuff like that. But we want to do it smart, so we want, we want intelligent economic growth, right? Not just economic growth that we throw against a wall and hope it stays. And so, so is that what you're looking for, is a greater concept? And then under that, we would say, we want a vibrant downtown, we want greater job opportunities, more well-rounded. Or are you looking for one of those right now to put on there and then go from there?
I'll let Greg answer that.
I was hoping you would answer that. No, yeah, I think, yeah, I'll answer that. So I do think for tonight, so we start kinda with five to seven that are your overarching goals here. That you're gonna say, these are the five things you absolutely wanna zoom in on. Underneath there, you're gonna have some of these secondary things. And then thirdly, what's gonna happen, the staff, with certainly getting input here, is gonna start saying, how are we gonna accomplish that? You know, for instance, you saying that we want good, smart growth here. Well, how are we gonna get there? And I don't wanna get in those weeds tonight, but that has to be the end result as this goes down into the work plan of saying, how are we gonna get there? And so I think it's really good to have it and hear those conversations, because I told Richard, it's going to not just be about the cloud. We're gonna have some very specific things set in here and they need to be recorded so that as we develop from top goals to bottom action plan, they fall somewhere and in some time. Does that make sense?
We need to start at big pictures and start that funnel down to what's our action plan, what's our accountabilities, how do we measure our goals, those type of things. So things we talked about, even if it's not on the whiteboard, it's something we forgot about that we need to really address, especially prioritize this upcoming year. What do we need to do to give staff direction or community direction so we can lead from the top? What are the thoughts? We got culture, economic development, relationships, smart growth.
So this is what I've been thinking for a while, but, and I don't, I'm looking at a city manager and people that know how to blend. Years ago, when I studied Main Street, it wasn't just events. Main Street had opportunities for grants, they have opportunities for them to come and train, and they have opportunity for, they talk about architecture. Now, when we started Main Street, we, we did the historical area of the downtown that is Main Street. I would like to see, and so I'm looking at Lynn through the camera back here, but, so she is a city planner. I thought a city planner was a little different in that a city planner would look at the best areas of the community on where the, the good retail areas would grow, or where, you look at our downtown area and you would help the downtown merchants put restaurant, retail, restaurant, retail. When you look at our downtown area and you have five oh one C three, five oh one C three, five oh one C three, that's not a lot of income tax, or that's not a lot of sales tax coming downtown. So to me, and it might be a different word for terminology, you have a, what I'm gonna call city planner Lynn, but a city planner that looks at the overall town and says, yes, this is a historical district. And yes, this is a retail, this is an area where you're gonna build technology, you know, people that wanna work on computers. You've got these areas that are built, it's not a matter of, oh, where's the realtor gonna send you land? And I mean, it's a plan, it's planned. And I think that if you start with Main Street, a Main Street manager, and you really build them up to where they are, they are able to go out and get small businesses to come to your community. You might have the EDC focusing on economic development with large manufacturers, but if you have a Main Street manager that's like, oh, okay, well, I'm gonna go look for this type of retail to come to the town. So I think it's a matter of taking advantage of the resources that Austin has within the Texas historical. So I think some of these things under Main Street, beauty, Hallmark, the things that we talk about our town, those things could fall under that category that we kinda already have, it just needs to be developed.
Richard, can I just, I'm just thinking out loud of what, what you're saying, and again, trying to get them up into the higher, something that covers all of those, and I thought the member Corbelle, you kinda started with what I'll call, I hate to coin somebody else's phrase, but it's a livable, livable neighborhood, and I think you said that, and so that includes things like light, it includes things like your safety, includes parks. So it's your, what are we doing in, what does your neighborhood look like? Say, you don't want a small building that's dilapidated in your neighborhood and the parks are, I tell you, I don't think I've ever been in a city with as nice a park as the city has. It's shocking, and as many parks the size of the city have. It's amazing. And I think that kinda overarching might.
The livability side of things, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? Quality of life, livability, authority.
You have such a deep voice, I'll bring you the microphone.
So being welcoming, having the openness to try new things and be known for that, and to kind of project that in the way people have visions for the future.
I'm on Kelly's, Main Street is, it's a greater thing than just events, and I think that's what you're kinda hitting home, is the historical side of things and keeping the area and planning that area out properly and making sure that businesses that go in, like, hey, we, we really don't wanna see that kind of business going. That's why we have the restrictions, go through those kinds of things. But that is definitely a great idea to keep that strong. I know everybody thinks I don't think about anything but the airport. But that's not true. But it's something that's real related to the airport is economic development. Mark talked about the different kinds of, like, really good, varied. I like to see one that keeps our kids living, not moving to the balance. And I think, look, the airport is, I think the airport is worth it because I think that airport is here. It's not for everybody that has a plan, not just like it's a little type of, or whatever. It's an economic development tool to bring business. I like how one, one good friend of mine, when business comes to them, they're not coming on a freight. No, they're coming in something that's earned here, and they're gonna be landing there. And that's how it grows, that's why I like to keep growing. I want it to be good.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Okay, so top priorities, and this is just umbrella stuff and a lot of things, is this gonna fit some of our priorities for the next twelve months under? We got culture, economic development, relationships, smart growth, livability, Main Street stuff. We can tweak this a little bit, what are we missing?
I said I was gonna keep my mouth shut, but now, so I think related to this and what Kelly mentions with businesses, right? And where we put businesses and how we approve them, we have a master plan that does some of that. But then they also have to come to council and often request variances, right? And we saw some of that last night. And so I think one of the things which we're doing tonight, but I think it needs to be continual, is this has to be planning. There has to be short and long-term planning and dedication to that plan that's put in place. So when we have a master plan, which needs updating every three to five years, prior to approving something, we look at that plan or we ask Lynn, is it within there? But then maybe one step further, the council decides it may be within that plan, but is it specifically meeting what we want for that area? And so there's, there's larger planning, but then there's also some, I'll say nuanced planning or nuanced decisions that have to be made. You know, downtown, the zoning may allow for a five oh one or a five oh one, but as they come in, the council may be able to exercise what authority they have to say, that's not really what we want down there. Or here's what we're really trying to tailor to, so how do we make that happen? And how do we entice that to come down to that area as those individual decisions come up? So I don't know how you word that, because there's planning, but there's also, there's macro planning, there's micro planning as well.
The plans, you know, need to be, we need to commit to those, but they need to be flexible enough as, you know, growth happens, if changes happen, that we can adapt to needs and those type things. To commit to short-term and long-term planning, love that. Bryce?
It needs to be easier to do business here. Over the last several years, it seems to be that anybody you talk to, contractors, anybody that's trying to come to our town, first thing they anybody that's trying to come to our town, first thing they hear is no. And I think we need to be trying to work on tackling, we make it work and sure things happen.
I, I love that. I think I mentioned we need to be a yes community. I think Mayor said that earlier, type thing. Business-friendly, community-friendly, or yes community. If we don't have the answer, how can we make it happen?
The excitement in what we're doing and, uh, in, in the community, like, getting people to be like, hey, you seen what Mount Pleasant's doing over there? We wanna be like Mount Pleasant or we wanna move to Mount Pleasant. It's, it's an exciting thing going on.
For sure. Goes under our culture and everything. Thank you, Garrett.
Can I just take the planning item? And I would like to, I'd actually like to see it over on the city government side, very strictly the planning, because planning has one of the most difficult jobs, actually, is to have a culture where they're gonna get to yes. And if you can't get to yes on this particular way, you could do it this way. And, 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 um, planning departments are, can be great facilitators. But they're all rowing in the same boat. And I will say, ours is better, certainly, and has done better. But we talked about doing guide, you know, for people so that it's easy, they know exactly what steps to go through. So, I know Lynn's working on that already, but that just needs to be a high priority. I, I'll just say that for the organization.
Yeah, and that comes together with, uh, something I haven't mentioned yet is, uh, citizen participation. I think they, they're kinda down right now. I did see that the, like, the meeting last night was viewed over a hundred times. But I would love to see, I mean, I think if we, we build this stuff, then you're gonna get more people at elections. You're gonna get more people focused in on the town once they see there is a plan and a goal, you know, and a communication.
I love that, Mayor. Perfect. So, we'll put on one of these back there, citizen participation. That's huge. Okay. Anything else that we're missing, we haven't talked about, that you're passionate about, that you want ingrained in Mount Pleasant? But when you think of Mount Pleasant, I think we've had a really good conversation here and those type of things. Anyone else? Hey, Greg?
Oh, you guys want a break? You okay? Are you picturing the microphone? Oh, boy, once you start, Mike, it's over.
When, when somebody comes to the city to get something done, to be timely and don't be, put them off and make things happen over great amounts of time. Get it done, stay in touch with them, make sure they know they're important.
I love that. Communication, efficiency, making them feel important. Really appreciate that. Oh, that's great.
Well, when Mike was speaking, um, you know, I do this at my little shop. You know, this is much bigger. But you have to look at your people and look at their gifts and their talents. So, there could be somebody working in this city that is a salesperson, just a naturally born salesperson. Now, they might be someone that's crunching numbers, but at the same time, they could be a natural born salesperson. Um, so, I look at Mike and I'm looking at him through the screen back here, but those of us that have worked alongside the EDC know he's a go-getter. We know that Mike is gonna go knock on doors, even if he has to hold off. That is a salesperson. That's someone that's aggressive enough to go out and, and, and get it done. So, we have, we can't all be, uh, number crunchers. We can't all be this, this. You've got to have a good variety of people working here to look at their gifts to say, okay, this is a person that can, like Mike said, get things done timely. But then you've gotta have that person working with the salesperson to hold their feet to the ground and go, oh, no, we can't promise this because we can't do this. But that's, I think, when you build a team, maybe out of, um, where I said code, Lynn, you know, Lynn's area city planner, Main Street, that you have to make sure that we are, we have those people in place so that they know when we say go, they go. And they know where they can go to get their resources.
I like that. So, building a strong team. Love that.
I think you can sum a lot of this up into community service. When they come to the city, we're here to serve, get them to the table and let's get things done.
Love that. Thank you, Garrett.
I think, I think we're gonna, uh, so I think what we'll, we'll try to do is, I think you've got some really good overarching. Typically, what we try to do is we'll pull it back, we'll pull it in and we'll try to kinda put it all together, um, so that you can see at the top level, here's the things that you want. I would, I wanted to just say a couple things that I think that, because somebody always feels bad usually in this room when we do this, and that's the guy in charge, sewer. No one wants to talk about sewer as a goal. All right, Aaron? But I will talk about it because sewer's gonna connect in, uh, infrastructure connects to economic development. And this city has prepared itself and has also borrowed a lot of money in order to be ready to economically develop, especially when it comes to water and sewer. And so, that connection is very important because the less we grow, the more we keep having to absorb as current residents, those utility bills. And so, I just think because of all the infrastructure stuff, and I'll show you the pro- projects in a minute. Congratulations, Council, on that, because there's a lot of things at work that have been done and are being done right now to create that infrastructure that's there. And, you know, people drive the roads in there, roads tell you something. They do. It's like, how do you, how well do you take care of your city? How well do you invest in it? And so, that infrastructure part, we really don't talk about often as kind of a core, one of those core things. But I do think, um, that I've said it for quite a while, is we've done a lot of investment into our infrastructure, especially water and sewer. So, economic development's high up there, connected to all the infrastructure that's down. And then I would say this as a newcomer to you, and you might not like this, but there used to be a lot of, um, frustration, like outward frustration, agitation, just like, everybody's like, man, everybody's angry. And that's exciting. It's great. But I will say, there's a continued murmuring. So, if we can get past the murmuring and get to where everybody says, you know what? That person is gonna make a mistake, but, um, it's still positive, it's still positive. So, we hold ourselves accountable, there's no doubt. The city has things to improve on, without a doubt. But I do think murmuring out here holds us down. So, if we can take the murmuring, especially when we're not sure if it's accurate or not, and, and as a community, kind of basically really gather our relationships together and say, we're not gonna like put each other down. Because I, I did a slide years ago on how many, if you told a rumor to three people, and they told the rumor to three people, and they told it to three people, how fast it gets up into hundreds and then thousands and tens of thousands and damage. So, I do think that there is, um, something here in Mount Pleasant that is still holding us back a little bit. And I hear a lot about, you don't know what we've been through, you don't know what it's been through. Well, guess what? Your future, right. But you can't let that murmuring keep going and keep kinda like, it's, it's fighting in a little bit of an uphill battle if we keep it going. So, I would just say, as we build those relationships with our key to this, as we continue to look at each other and say, I don't always agree with you, but you're doing awesome work. Mayor's doing awesome work. I don't agree with it, you won't agree with me all the time. You know what? That's an awesome organization there. And so, I do think, um, that relationship building is key. And I just wanted to say, as I have lived here and worked here, I see such potential. It's amazing. But there's still a murmur of what your past has been, feels like. But just, we need to do our part as a city, but great, uh, we have plenty to continue to improve on. Uh, but it's, give us a shot, you know, hold us accountable, but let's not demean or downgrade. I think Chief was looking for the word stability, but maybe there was a day when there was a lack of that. I don't see that, but I still see a murmur. Okay, let's just erase that. I just think, I think the city... I turn now to move on? All right. Thank you. Um, can we go back to the slides? He did a great job. A great job. And you know what? Sometimes you get these, sometimes you can get crazy stuff. You guys just work right down to the point and do what's important for this city to break down. Next slide. Oh, you wanna speak? Pardon? I'd like to interrupt this program to take a seven-minute break, which means, I don't have my, what time is it? So, at 6:22, if you can make it back, that'd be great. Stretch it out. Thank you. See, Mayor, when you ask for five minutes, I give seven, and we've been eight now. So, please, uh, return to your seats. Need to do that opera thing or whatever. All right, we are at six twenty-five. And Council, I have, again, I have the utmost respect for you because you you're running a second night in a row, so. If, I think what's important to understand is this isn't necessarily tonight, we're gonna figure this all out, and it's all gonna be done, and we get to go home and never talk about it again. It'll be ongoing, but I don't want you to get to a place where you're like, you know what? My brain's fried. I'm really tired. So, um, so, keep it going. We're gonna shift, so what we wanted to do tonight is cover that overarching goal, and what you did was really good because you got us, you gave all sorts of things underneath those big ones that are part of action plan. And so, um, we'll take those, put them together, we'll return them to you, we'll have another, probably during a council meeting. It may take a half hour and kind of go over them and talk about them. Couple of council members aren't here, maybe they have something to add, get their input into that too. But, um, so far, great. But we wanted to make sure as we are in budget season right now that we kind of talk about what you see as, um, budget principles or priorities, and I've asked, um, Richard kind of to go through, what does that actually mean? What we're looking for here? I realize it's kind of hard because you're not looking at a budget yet. But you establish a budget through one of your priorities, not necessarily knowing, um, what kind of money you have, even though I'm gonna tell you what kind of money you have, and it'll be a shock to you, I'm sure, telling you how much money you have. No, it will be the same story. So, but I wanted to, because I think something we wanted to talk about, okay, so we got all these goals you're talking about, and we talked about our future. But right now, the city is doing a whole lot of things, and we talked about some of them, so I just put up here, um, work in progress, and for Mayor and Councilmember Knight, some things that the city did in the last four, five years is borrowed funding, do a number of projects. Back in twenty-four, uh, earlier than twenty-four, they actually did some money that came, that borrowed money for the general fund. Which most of the money that you see in debt that we have has to do with utilities. And for instance, the wastewater treatment plant, basically doubling its size, or doing improvements to water treatment plants, infrastructure. But the general fund, which, um, happens from time to time, is borrowed, I can't remember, it was like eleven million, ten, eleven million, nine million, somewhere in there. But, um, we want to quick go through these, and again, we have to start by warming you up a little bit, right Garrett? And we're gonna talk about Delwood Park just for a minute. And, um, so sir, are you on the, are you on the mic now? Back up here.
All right, so this is, uh, this is a lot of interest in this project. This is the Delwood Park, uh, remodel we're doing. Very exciting. So, you can see there on the right, we have the overview. This is the conceptual. Yes, so, uh, that's the overlook, kind of the general area. We've, uh, really honed in on the main area to try to get as much out of that as we can. Uh, keep that scope of work down, but get a really premium product. So, you can see we have a new tennis court, basketball, and a pickleball complex. We'll be installing new pavilions in that area, kind of bringing it all together. There's gonna be a lot of trails connected, uh, a lot of new amenities like park benches, uh, tables, traffic obstacles. Uh, it's gonna be just a really good update, along with updating playgrounds, uh, borders, servicing, kind of getting it to just look right, right now we have half-plastic, half-concrete borders. That's not really a beautiful product. So, I'm gonna go through some of these additions on the next slide. It kind of really brings it to life. As you can see, we have multiple pickleball courts. A lot of interest in that, the quickest-growing court in the country, maybe the world. So, we'll have a capacity for, we'll make the tennis court also a multipurpose court, where you'll be able to host tournaments for pickleball. Uh, we also have new basketball. Uh, the area where the basketball courts are now, that's a, we may or may not fence that in, that's optional. But that's gonna be kind of a common area to play soccer, throw the frisbee, let the dog go for a run. Yes, so a dog park, it's not in these, this is, this scope of work is just the main general area. So, we, we're not forgetting the dog park, it's just on a separate area of the park. That's a smaller project too. But we really just wanna focus on get a very premium product here out of Delwood. We'll also be remodeling the restroom. Give you a different standard point, all-new LED lighting. Yes, yes, so all these new, these are all new sidewalks, uh, if you're familiar with the area, those are out there. So this is the project schedule and where we're at right now. You can see today, we have it before you. Uh, next Tuesday, we're gonna have a community neighborhood, uh, friends group meeting at Civic Center, five-thirty, you're welcome to come out. It'll be pretty much the same, uh, presentation. And then we'll take it to the park board to approve the layout. Uh, we'll get construction documents underway and then get it back to council for approval. Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir. So creek maintenance, uh, that was a very popular one when we had our first, uh, community meeting. So what we're doing is we're trying to focus on these improvements right now, get them out of the way, and see what kind of funds we have to dedicate to a hydraulic plan and, and look at what we can really do with what is left. Because that's a very, those get very, very expensive very quick. The springs? They are. Yeah, we'll look at them.
So, when we had our first meeting down in the park, and, um, they've been sharing this, so hopefully we'll get a lot of people, um, to come. But what I would love to see, and I think you would too, is that we're hoping to get more, we talked about citizen participation, so that, um, it will continue on. And, uh, so when I say citizen participation, it's as working along with, like the master gardener, or the ag department at the college, or various people, like.
I'm gonna be your, uh, city attorney. So, I don't wanna get too far into talking just specifically about Delwood Park. This was a teaser, and so what we want to show you is here's where it's headed, and, um, it's gonna come back to council, kind of basically, once we get all the input in, it comes back to you for the final blessing, and then we go and do a project. So, how something like this fits into your overarching goals? I am keeping. Look at your overarching goals with the livability, local neighborhoods, community parks, and you, you look your way down, and there's an improvement. And at the end of the day, we, staff, will come up with, this is a project, this is an action item, and here's the timeline, you just saw that. And then, we're able to kind of report back via in writing, in basically quarterly reports. And then you'll be able to track our, you're able to track, the community's able to track, but you know what else? We track. And we know what we commit to, and so there's a real accountability. There's also like, you know, it's, you get great pride as you walk through a project. He's been so proud of this project, it's just awesome to listen to, but we've been sliding a little bit, and now all of a sudden, it's like, he and I have been meeting a couple times, like, okay, ready to go, he's got his timelines now, he's got his meetings set, we have a conceptual design, so now it's like, let's get it to construction. Let's get it going, so. Anyway, that's kind of how the whole plan works for multiple different things. And, um, this is one kind of in the beginning stages, so what we all expect is when we tell you we're gonna start construction and let's just say it's, it's probably gonna be next spring, probably not gonna be get, might get to it this fall, maybe, maybe? If we can get it all bid out. Yeah, we might be able to. So we'll get that once we get the design nailed down. You don't have to answer. Don't answer.
I think we're two weeks away from finished construction. I mean, two months away from like construction documents even being finished, so.
I always think of the rainy season here, so you're right, I'm getting that before it. So, this is a particular project that they, that the city council basically not in the ballot measure, so there's a ballot measure people go for, and it wasn't specifically saying how much money goes to this park, how much money goes to the roof and the fire station, um, uh, how much money goes towards roads, but the council did come up with, hey, here's the general amount of money we anticipate. So that's why, for this particular, there's two million dollars. But it's pretty shocking how fast two million dollars come, and like, you'll see in the project list next to the street, and he's, we just looked at first street, and I think he's up to a million dollars just on first street, so your two million? Half gone on one street, so that will be something we need to continue working on, and there's some good things in the, actually in the comp plan, talking about pavement management. And there have to be some conversations about how do we catch up a little bit? Because it's only gonna get worse. I think when you brought up, one of you brought up paving, one or two, three overlays on top and curb stock, I think we talked about that. Curb stock, now you got the curb to deal with too, so. Yeah. Anything you want to end with, Delwood there, pardon?
Understanding limited budget, and I did bring up with you a couple of weeks ago, and I think I sent you and Greg an email or whatever, but I've gotten a lot of, uh, concern about the conditions in Keith Park. And I know you're looking to address lighting issues, you're looking to address the water fountains, so if there's any way that there can be a consideration to maybe looking at, uh, I know restrooms are extremely expensive, but due to some things that, you know, I shared with you, that the complaints that we were getting, I would ask that if there's any way to, to address that issue, we please look at it.
So, I'll shine on that a little bit, uh, so a neighborhood park usually doesn't have a rest facility, because it, you look at the amount of people that that's gonna be able to serve, uh, to the cost. We would love to put every facility in every neighborhood, but that's, it's kind of, you have community parks, neighborhood parks, and you have regional parks, and unfortunately, you'd have to choose what facilities go where, and the capacity for those facilities.
All right, we're gonna move past this, but I think, you know, saw that email, and Garrett talked to me a little bit, and it's like, we can do this and this, so I think when, when you say, just don't say no, there is a no on the bathroom right now, financially, you'd have to figure out where you would get that, but there's some things you can do. And I think that's what's important about when you talk about getting the yes, at least even partially, uh, make a big difference, so. That's, that's what he's, uh, that's what we, that's what we want our organization to be like. All right, sir, you want to take that with you? Anyway. You know, it's kind of like, we talk about, sometimes we get wrapped up in the other stuff. And there's just a lot of good going, like Saturday, right? Saturday was an awesome event. So, I'm gonna go through this real quick, street improvements, council, I think you just awarded, uh, some bids to do that, Garrett's been out there, and anybody watching, uh, next week, that starts, and so we'll start seeing road improvements, and council, if you, if you, the ones that were here for, at the meeting, watched the audit last year, the street kind of had a negative balance. How do you like, have negative, no, like, no money in it? Um, and so that's one thing that caught us up in the whole booties ratings, that dropped us two places in the last eighteen months. But, um, good for Garrett, this past audit, it goes that positive, only three thousand, but it was negative two hundred something. So, you know, we're gonna just keep moving up, but the bottom line, it meant you couldn't spend money on streets out of the fund, so you've got to back up at least zero, and then build it up, and that's kind of the benefit of having those money borrowed there, you can get some street improvements while we get that back in line, that fund, and then that, then you can just reoccurring every single year to get the project, so. Very important that this was on there, to do some street improvements, and now we gotta show the community that we're gonna do it, it was done. So, I'll be much quicker. Fire station roof replacement, those are all things that were budgeted for, the acquisition of ladder cars, I, he told me they have twenty twenty-seven, serious. That thing's gonna be old by the time you get it. Airport hangar expansion, there you go buddy, I included you on the list, we've been hearing about that, it's all about that, and, uh, great project. Library, um, getting a handicapped accessibility project, where you get grants and extra parking spaces. The grant guru of the world right there, that, um, he finds another grant, but again, there's big things here and small things here. They all are improvements to quality of life. So then utility fund, um, you all know this because you've been doing payments for every meeting, um, the water meter replacement project, so they're all installed. And now, um, got a little more work, he told me he's at ninety-five percent, that not quite all of them are online, working the way they're supposed to, which helps the league, but ninety-five is a good place to be, but, um, again, these would be things that would show up as action items in our overall strategic plan and action items, what's the timeline, what's the, and so forth. Waste water treatment plant, you're very well aware of, West Blue Project, Cypress Industrial Lit Station, that's something that the EDC, um, was a huge participant in, so when you talk about EDC, how can they help? There's a great example of them giving a million dollars to the city to upgrade the infrastructure and add industrial projects. All the John Deere sewer line replacements, that's down on the John Deere, um, where they do all the sales for tractors and so forth, because that tank has been eroding, and we have to re-align our sewer line there, so that doesn't fall into the street, that maybe a much bigger problem. Two generator grants, there's another grant, and, and the fire chief, um, was fantastic helping get this, but they are, uh, generators, for if we lose power out at our two water treatment plants, those will kick in, those were, we didn't have those. And so, again, those were two grants that, um, they were, they were at least obtained or written prior to me getting here. And, uh, I think, um, former employee was the one managing it, and he took it over, and we're getting, we're getting those kickoff meetings coming up shortly. And then, uh, LBS Water Treatment Plant, this is one of those interesting ones where, he was built eleven years ago, and it's supposed to be extra capacity. Eleven years ago. So, uh, we're waiting for those pumps, not funded by the ratepayers, funded by those who designed it in appropriately, but you know, there's always Murphy's, right? So where'd they send it? To Mount Pleasant, Tennessee? Yeah, they sent our pumps to Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, so. We know they're in the United States, we know they're in the road, but they went the wrong way. So again, just wrapping up all these projects will show up as action items, with some timelines on them, and, um, I think, I'll just say this, as a community, can be awfully proud at all these things that you're, you're doing, and, uh, we just need to be efficient and, and, uh, wise management of them, good management of them, so we've done that much work. All right, we're heading for budget priorities, so just, uh, actually, we're not. I want to talk about the financial status. I'm not gonna sit here and give you a break, you got some breaks, we could talk two hours. But I'm gonna give you, um, an overview from my short-term perspective. And I'll say that the three, three things I want to say to you is, uh, we'll talk about the audit, which we still have a draft, but you will see that, and we'll be sending it to you in August. That audit ended year fiscal September twenty twenty-four, prior to three of you being here, like, three months after you got here, and four months, and three months after I got here. So that audit is, um, not good. Um, there seems to be a trend over the years that has been revenues here, expenditures here, which has dropped you down, if you remember, we talked about six percent? Well, that budget, that particular fiscal year shows another negative. Interestingly to say, and I'm, I gotta, I gotta go, I gotta go with the good with the bad, there was, uh, very high revenue expectation. A lot of it had to do with sales tax, and I think what we've seen from sales tax, and we'll talk in just a minute, is it started diving, it dived, go pretty hard, and it wasn't projected that way. Literally, a lot. So, I'll give kudos to the staff who were here, because they realized that, they, they put in freezes. So I'll give kudos to the staff who were here because they realized that they, they put in freezes on hiring employees. So it would have been a lot worse, but they saved, um, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, to make it less of a drop. But you'll see the exact numbers. Um, we're still going through it right now and we need to meet with the auditors before it becomes a council. But that'll be first perspective in, uh, August. So then we go to current fiscal year and, uh, we are, we, uh, we made a lot of cuts in the budget process. And, uh, what I, what I will take full responsibility for is I missed the sales tax projection. Thought we dropped it down to it was going to be the same. Yeah, we, we dropped it way down to what we thought maybe it will hold stable. It did not. Um, it continues to drop. Um, so we basically look at it now, so, so the step we're in right now is we, we're in a budget step. So the two things we do right now is we meet every single department, we see what they budgeted for in this current year, what their, our expenditures, then we look at what's proposed. We have to go back two more years to what they spent years prior. And, and so this year, everybody went through and we took a look at what do you expect to spend line item by line item? And so we do have, uh, less revenue than what we budgeted for. Now, obviously I missed it because the actual last year compared to this year is about two hundred thousand right now. Last, our budget around five hundred, uh, above what, uh, actually brought in. Here's the, this, sales tax, we'll get there to state this. Sales tax, it took some sharp declines in the beginning of this fiscal year, the first like three months. Then it had a huge up month because Chuck was here and he told us Chick-fil-A is doing good this month. And it did, it was like double. Um, and then it went right back down to, uh, so only one other month was up, every other month it's lower, but only slightly lower. So what I would say is we look in the next fiscal year, it looks like it's stabilizing to being, flattening out, I will say from the angle down it's been, but we were, um, over budgeted. Uh, we overestimated revenue. Now, staff has done a great job. We went through where are you spending, do you need all of that? Um, they have been pretty tight on their budgets. I will say with ninety percent certainty as we project out, we will end balance, um, and maybe a little bit. So it could be the first year in a few that actually the audit may say you have a negative balance that we can't get through. And we're talking general funds. So that's kind of the year we're looking at. So we're starting in a place and I am going to back up and say, remember the CARES funding. Remember the three million plus we had that had been for years sitting in a bank account over here doing nothing? And, uh, the federal government said, hey, if you've got less than this, you can just use it however you wish. We put it in there because we were down less than six percent in reserve. Your policy, you have a policy to say seventeen. That pushes up to twenty-one. The audit does say we're up around twenty percent. So good thing is, is we did end the year on that twenty, last year's audit, having that reserve left. So, uh, and if we can just keep working on that and certainly maintain it at the percent that helps us a policy. That's the kind of stability you talk about. We're not there yet. I feel we're closer. We, we're not there yet. So, uh, we look at this year's as we look at it. Um, so what we do is I go, I go with every department, go through all their budgets. They were told they have no more money to spend. In fact, I told them I need to see some cuts coming in. And so we go through those, we look at it. And when I say cuts, we don't look at personnel per. Cause we're, we're a little, we're leaning there. Um, everything we do is going to impact some, some service level we have. And so we've done that and we've, uh, also a couple of things and transparency is critical. So when I do that, then I say, okay, where are we? Now, what if we gave a three percent raise to all the employees? That gets you here. Um, we also have some, which is for medical, it's like less than five percent, about five percent premium increase, which is low in today's world. Um, so we load those in and so after first round, um, we're still a half a million dollars that we're missing the mark. And so we'll go back in the second round here and at ten days and start looking for a half a million dollar plus. And so, uh, that's the process we're going through right now. Again, what I would say is, uh, better, but not there yet. I think that's what he said is to get to that point to where we don't have to have this conversation ever again. And, uh, sales tax, what's it about? Top locally, uh, enhance businesses, encourage businesses, support local businesses. How do we get even out of cell? Great jobs, um, all the above will help that happen. We're, we're in a position to be a little part. So that's just the general and you're going to get it all. Certainly at the work session, you'll get a full presentation where we can, we'll get the audit here in a month, uh, through August. But, uh, we'll make it work. Make it work. So I just wanted to show you this because again, when you look at budget priorities, I think we, we, we can talk about all the other, other stuff, but the bottom line to it is we're probably seventy-plus percent as per, about thirty percent is something else. So it just kind of gives you public safety's fifty percent of your budget. So if you're like priorities, which is public safety, that's pretty much walked down. Uh, and so that just gives you a quick public work fifteen, Parks and Rec thirteen, interest of fiscal. And then like everything else that's in the general funds, like the libraries that have a variety of liability paid and all that stuff. With that next slide. So I guess, um, Richard, come back up and kind of facilitate a conversation about principles of where you want to see the funding focused on. Thank you.
Yeah, Greg, we're not going to get too detailed again, or some big picture stuff again. Talk about guiding principles when we're crafting this budget for the city and those type of things. Um, so city staff can hear from you, what should be some guiding principles or values as we craft this? And then you can hear back from them, things that are important to them. So we're just going to list again, as we're crafting the budget, what values should we put into it? What kind of principles should we put in when we're crafting this budget for our community and for our residents and for our city? Think about all the things that Greg just talked about. Going to throw out ideas again, high level stuff again, not getting into the weeds right now, that's going to come later. So what's some big picture stuff that we want to hear from you? Transparency has been something that's mentioned tonight. Budget, talking about budget, budget words, budget keywords that we can think of, focus on, that help guide us as we're crafting this budget. Any buzzwords or values that are important to you?
I would like to see us, and, and it's nothing new. I've advocated for this all the years I worked for this city. I know we're looking at percentages. I would like for us to at least take a look at possibly looking at a different type of raise where that the guys on the lower end of the payroll are compensated a little bit more. Cause if you get three percent, you're making a hundred thousand dollars a year. It's a good chunk of money. If you're making forty-five down here and you get three percent, it's not the same. And we go out here, you've got a family that's buying their groceries, costing two hundred dollars a week. And that's pretty significant. And then if you've got someone though who's getting a three thousand dollar a year raise, you know, they're all paying the same amount for the groceries. So I would like for once in this city's history, that since I've been here, that we actually take the time to look at maybe doing something different with our salary. So that the guys and girls on the bottom get to see a benefit equal to what some of the others get.
Okay, so looking at our salary schedule. Okay, what else? This is time to kind of give input and feedback as, as your team crafts this budget before they bring it back to city council. What kind of guiding principles would you want them to look at?
I would like our departments, and I don't know if this is possible, but I like, again, with Paul and the airport. And when he makes his presentation, oh, he's making money. We like that. So I would like to challenge our department head to be creative, think out of the box and think, okay, so how can my department make the city some money instead of us just spending it?
Are there new revenue streams? Okay, out of the box revenue streams. Okay, something about, other thoughts?
Uh, just be mindful of what we're spending on public safety and, and where that money needs to go. Cause I, I mean, public safety is a big thing for us, so.
Big mayor, okay, public safety. Any other priorities, the things we need to focus on as we're working on this for the next little bit? Going with what Mr. Greg said, talk about even, you know, what's on the horizon, those type of things. Well, yeah, I want, yeah, I think we'll, let's reverse that feedback here. What would you like the city council to know as you craft these budgets, go into details and what challenges you're facing? You know, pros and cons. What kind of things and principles are you looking at that they need to consider as they work with you to craft this budget? That's best for our community?
The, the first thing is, um, got the clock going? Get ninety seconds. You want to go first?
Obviously, uh, the fire services, uh, uh, basically lost revenue, uh, with the new fire contract. And we lost personnel. And, you know, we're still required to cover the city and the county and that is, uh, difficult at times.
Sure.
Yeah, we run a skeleton crew though and, uh, put in a lot of fire. But it's a passion, but y'all know it is. And I like it. Right. Old man, you know? Yesterday morning, yeah, I wanted to tell y'all about that. Talking about the economic development. Okay, that's, we had a jet come in there, said when I got there, it was about six thirty. Had fuel in the jet, going to the long distance. And putting it back. Last thing, ultimately seven thirty to eight, eight o'clock. And fueling again so he could get back to town. And they made that trip one day, business people on board. And that's how big business is. They're going to come in one of those jets and.
Staff, if there's, if there's just a quick little short, what is it that you, um, you've done your budgets? They're all tight, you know, that, but if there is like, what's your highest priority? That if there was more money, is that safe to say? What would you spend it on?
But my priority is always people, keeping people. Um, for example, in the law enforcement industry, I can tell you that we spend less in lawsuits on a ten-year officer than a five-year officer, less on a fifteen-year officer than a five-year officer, and less on twenty. And so maintaining my people, but also attracting. Uh, I can tell you that in the last six years, within law enforcement, the, uh, market has been insane. Versus my prior twenty-eight years, uh, it has been a fight to get qualified applicants, but it's difficult. So the job market is tight and, but my people are always a priority. Keeping the ones that I have, that we have spent time and money, frankly, training and they have the experience. And when they go out, they spend the extra two minutes with somebody so that they feel good, not just had what was the appropriate outcome, but they also thank the officer. And so those experiences are really important.
Well done. You ready yet? All right, yeah, about a hundred and ninety seconds.
I agree with the, the people, but that's what, that's how we're able to do everything we do. And just keep in mind expectations. When we start making, I'd say we're getting to major cuts to where that has the ability to change service levels. Uh, just keep in mind that we are going to try to keep as many people as we can and keep the expectations that we are reducing budget. So, uh, the expectations have to kind of go with where we want to go with our budget.
So our, uh, mission is a little, uh, different in that we are in the long-term view outwardly and also have to be as proactive and, um, helpful in the short term to bring as much development here, which ultimately impacts all of the bottom line on the revenue and, uh, sales tax and property tax and that sort of thing. So we, uh, we walk a kind of a fine line. So, um, we want to continue to invest in our people, to give them the training and the worldview to be as responsive to whatever comes our way to get a yes. Um, however, we need to do it and, uh, ultimately, uh, to have some wiggle room in our funding to be able to invest in some, uh, strategic planning on the front end, the downtown, um, area, uh, that Kelly discussed and, and also, um, some of the other suggestions that have come through as far as how we categorize and prioritize what goes where and how we bring all that into the city. So, um, well, we're trying to spend the money that we make.
She would tell you that, um, one of the big things that actually it, it started and hasn't been completed yet is you have a new comprehensive plan, but it hasn't been changed. The, the zoning map, zoning map been changed, the code changed to match the comp plan? Yeah, usually the, the whole, the whole goal of this comprehensive plan document is that you change your codes to match it. So we get the community want. So that's, that's one thing that's, the funding's not there and we've talked about it before, but hasn't been, uh, hasn't hit the highest priority line.
So I think it's more of that, I think everyone up here would, would say that there, we constantly try to stay with the yes. We don't want to go say no to anybody. But some things that you either have to weigh, well, I can either put money towards helping the fire department with fire hydrants across town or I can continue with, say, clean out or things across the board. It just, the more you cut, someone, someone gets hurt every once in a while, so. I want for, say, the fire department to get their fire hydrants where they would be able to protect fire. Do you have certain streets that don't have any or upgrade certain lines? So we can have a little bit more of a tour in certain areas where, you know, maybe a bigger water line can get more water towards a bigger building with four percent for, for big. So.
I'm, I mean, in finance, we're just trying to figure out ways to present numbers better to y'all to be more open and transparent. That's what our goals are.
Remember we had, um, no monthly reports? Investment reports were sketchy. Um, she's done a great job with that, but I can, I can tell you where we were. And I started in June of last year. Oh, my goodness. And she's been without half of her staff. She's had two vacancies, she just got one filled. So, um, there's a plenty of improvement to be made yet in, in all our areas, but people have made some great strides here. Except for the library.
Um, so with the library, I think not just us, but everybody in the community, it's increase of costs of goods. It, it's, it's felt by everyone in the community. And so with that, that does limit you with resources that you can provide to the community. And so I think that's one of the biggest things for us is, you know, there's all these resources and databases that we would love to provide. But with these budget cuts, it's like, you don't really want to commit to those and then you're going to have to drop them in, in a year. Even in those that are popular. So I think that's one of the big things with cuts is increase of costs and then also, um, ability to get additional resources available for the community.
I will always push for investment in your people, whether it is salaries, benefits, training is very important as well. Um, long, trying to get people here long-term.
I'm going to agree with, um, everyone. I believe it's the people. It's the ones that.
It's the ones that we all stand. Um, it's the people, it's the, keeping the people that we already have and retaining them and getting them the training that they need. And a lot of times requests come in for certain things and it's not that we're saying no, it's, we don't, we don't have that ability right now because of cuts and all that. So it's the ability to keep the people that you have, those that have dedicated their lives to this city. Even though they may not live here, they dedicate their time coming back day after day to take and serve and work here in this city.
I think, uh, Lupe is the, the best example of what she just said to you is when you go through this process and she knows costs have increased. And I ask her for a three percent cut. So if you actually look at that, you forget the increases, you're like, too bad. I need you to actually cut your existing budget three percent. So you're actually usually looking at six percent, for instance, if, if costs go up. So I, I have to tell you, they have been troopers. Does not fun. Extremely difficult because none of them want to lower their level of service they give all of this city, none. We are scratching on that pretty hard right now. So we're about to that point of having it a little deeper. I will say to you, I pray that, um, we finally turn that flat and that reduction back up and that economy starts turning. And, um, then, um, Councilmember Corbelle, we can get to a, here's where we are. And I think, you know, you asked for examples, it's like, we funded, um, these buildings being demolished, we've done lots of them. Um, I think last year we didn't, or the spring, when I first started, we didn't, we weren't doing any of them. We kind of discussed it, there's like forty thousand dollars, but that can be eliminated. But is that a priority when you look at that? I know public safety mentioned right off the bat. Um, and so when you talk about, we, we, we did add some money over into the downtown to get these events, sponsoring these events. And we had a good one, what did that do for us? Two thousand people in town, maybe they shot more, is there a return on the investment? So when you ask me, what kind of things are we talking about? That's kind of, you know, we want to preserve the money for doing demolitions of these lighted buildings. Um, you know, it's, I think everybody understands public safety is always number one, so. I want to know if something, if something's, my, out, my building's on fire, I got a crash, I need somebody to, uh, somebody assaulting me, you want them there. And as hard as it is for me to tell Garrett that, and I tell him, I love the edging he does on all the sidewalks and all the parks, you know what? I gotta have that police department, so. This is very hard, it's hard for you as a council, hard, hard to go through this process, but just part of it is, hey, what do you, what's your priority? I think I spoke to.
Oh, I, I think it's this dialogue we wanted to have and those type of things. Does anyone else have any other thoughts or feelings, it's a good time to talk about it right now?
Well, um, I feel like Lupe, um, you know, we recognize your talent, um, you're a good grant writer, especially in getting grants. And, um, obviously we are talking about, you know, watching how many people are on the, on, on our employee roster. But maybe we try to find someone that's already hired or, I don't know. But we need a grant writer. When we're looking at this improvement or this improvement or these things that we're lacking, if we can get a wonderful grant writer, um, maybe, you know, some of that money would come our way to build these, uh, these gaps. So I don't know if that's, but like budget priorities, I would love that there's a person.
Grants.
That, uh, is bringing in income.
Grant opportunities. Okay, any other thoughts? I know it's been a long night, two nights in a row for some of you. Okay, someone that's an arm's length away from this process, I just hope you know how much we appreciate you. And I truly mean this, I know, like Greg said, there's murmuring sometimes out there, but those who know what you do behind the scenes, know how hard these discussions are and how difficult it is. Sometimes we see, you know, a, a different way to get from point A to point B, you know, but we all want to get to point B together. You, you look at these priorities up on the wall, man, we all agree with these, there's nothing out there that stands out that we're not all shaking our head, yeah, that's, that's what we want from Mount Pleasant, those type of things. Sometimes we have those difficult discussions of, you know, how we get there might be a little bit different, those things, but that's okay to have those conversations. So I hope you know how much we appreciate your time and sacrifice to do these things. We know these are difficult conversations and those type of things. But as long as we stay focused on these goals and priorities of what we want Mount Pleasant to be and what makes it great and what we love about Mount Pleasant, um, it makes those decisions a little bit easier. So I appreciate you, um, keep up the hard work, we're be, we're behind you as a community and we truly mean that. So, um, sometimes I know I can feel lonely and thankless and those type of things, but please don't ever feel that way. We love you and we appreciate you and we're, we're here for you and it's a great community and we love it and that's why we're here. And that's why we go through these tough times, have these tough conversations is because we love what we're doing here and we love this community, so thank you.
We're almost done, we have to have a mic drop after that. You pull up another slide, a couple, there's only an hour left. Again, we, um, I put optional on here because I figured this is about right where we'd be. And so, um, as we go through the budget process, we'll start looking at, at what, what, what's most important here, one, tier two, tier three, we'll, we'll follow up on that for next slide. Is it my favorite slide? Yep, final slide. Um, next steps, again, so what we'll do is we're going to take this and we're going to put it up into the, the goal-setting side, the strategic planning side. We'll put all these ideas under it and then we'll come back to council. Um, so you can see a copy of it, we'll spend, probably add a council meeting sometime, half an hour maybe, just saying any more input, did we miss something, anything to add to it? Uh, and we'll continue moving towards that to where September, I would hope that we're able to come in with a, basically on from the top all the way down to action plan. These folks are going to know right now that the action plans are going to start beginning to be written, um, from tonight, so I appreciate it too. So I did leave council comment and according to them, mayor, two minutes, right? I didn't put that on there, but any other comments, council members? Do you want to make? I was. So Richard and I talked at the break and it's like, it just feels very good to have everybody feel comfortable in here and you're just like talking about your community. What better, what better thing can you do? And so our job is to put them together for you now and say, oh, that's our role and that's next step. So with that, thank you, have a good night. Richard, did you want to say where you want us to spend the money? Chamber? No. Anyway, thank you all, thank all, all the staff members for being here, greatly appreciated and all that interaction you have. Well done, well done as a group, thank you. Good night. Oh, do you want to see a meeting adjourned? I forgot that.